Second.
Who's second?
Doesn't matter.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passed six zero.
Okay. First order of business approval of the minutes of August fifth. Or we should do a roll call first and do the approval of this. Thank you.
Pat.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
Stacy here. Christine here. Rachel. Hughes Addison. John.
Eric. Okay, now we can go to the, uh, the meeting, meeting of August fifth.
Make the motion to approve the B O T meeting August fifth, twenty twenty five.
There's support for that?
I'll support.
Give you a minute if you don't. Now, if you don't need a minute, we're gonna do, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I have to have stayed and I wasn't there.
Okay.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Alright. Are there any additions to the agenda? Alright, we're gonna go to public comment for three minutes, agenda items only. Matt?
What is interested?
There you go, I think it's on.
I did not. I did not.
I do.
Okay, this is actually in regards to the bills. In the bills, you'll find that there is a hall rental refund for Miss Stanky. Um, after doing some research, Miss Stanky made, um, an agreement, August twelfth, or not August, April twelfth, to, uh, rent the hall. That was a Saturday, however, her event was the nineteenth of July. If you turn to page two of rental agreement, it states that before it can be put on the books, that your deposit will be paid for one hundred dollars. Secondly, um, it also states that you will pay your rental fee by five o'clock the Thursday before your event. After further investigation, I find that, um, Miss Stanky did not pay, uh, her hundred dollars for deposit or her three hundred dollars for the rental fee until the twenty fourth, which is after the event. So, I would suggest that you decline her deposit because it also states within the rental agreement that that is a possibility. I find it highly discriminatory if Miss Stanky is allowed to do that, then the rest of the residents are not allowed to put our names in the book, use the hall, then pay after our event. It's not right. Uh, if you'd like to see the contract with the dates on it, I can give it to you to look at. I'm looking for it right now, do we? Would you like to see it?
Well, I got them up here.
Not on the bill, but the, the contract with the dates.
Yeah, I, I hope the contract's.
Okay.
If you bring it up, you'll just stay away from it.
Yeah. Would you like to see it?
Sure, I'll.
Yeah, maybe. Set on last.
I was just looking to see that time.
Refund those.
The current refund is on this?
Yes. Okay. See, one problem. Well. Um, and it speaks on the second page here that it shall be paid before it's reserved, before it's written down in the book.
And I, may I ask how you got a copy of that, Julie?
I got a copy of it from B S N A. Get you, um. Well, so her initials are at the box. And I would call this out for anybody.
Is that a number that's allowed, press?
Other than that, yes, and right here it states at the bottom.
Good description.
Okay. They do scan everything into B S N A.
He said.
Hundred dollars. That's a sad. Twelve is a Saturday or was it December? So, it, to me, it's discriminatory. I know.
Alright, did you see that? I just, I just see that we, uh, pull that hundred dollars from the bills and then approve the bills to the bill. Then we can. We can talk for a while and see.
But really, there's nothing to talk about, it's already in the past.
Yeah, she, she broke the law by doing that a lot.
We're gonna, we're gonna authorize a refund.
But she.
That's right.
Contract. And that's a contract that this board has put together for rental agreement for any other person to rent the hall. So.
We might recommend to pay the bills with the exception of that hundred dollars.
I'm gonna make a motion that we pay the bills minus that hundred dollars and. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, we can't, he's right, we can't do it right now, we're still in the minutes, but when it gets, we get to the bill, when we get to the bill.
Good for her.
Alright, I'm sorry.
Patty? You're a resident and I think that's petty. It's a hundred bucks, you know what I mean? That's petty.
It's, it's public comment time.
Okay.
Any other public comments? We'll have more to comment.
The events.
Okay, there's no other, uh.
Why is that Eddie anyway on that?
Now, Eddie, you'll have a minute to talk about it.
I'll take it.
You'll have, you'll have a chance. Alright, if there's no other public comments, we're gonna do our presentation from you and you regarding the audit. You all have a call first or you're. Yeah, that, she's first and then the sewer, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're completely fine. Yes.
And just, just so you, you guys have, you just gave you a copy of this, you wanna follow along with the presentations, what you got?
Yep, so the, um, big packet is gonna be the full financial statements and then this is just what I'm gonna go over with some highlights for the twenty twenty five audit.
Okay, well, let's stick with the school.
So, my name's Christina Labiel, I've been the audit manager on the audit since, I think, twenty twenty, um. I am happy to report that this year we are for rent, all the audits are caught up, so that is awesome. When I got involved, it was around the COVID times and it's like a lot of other governments, things were behind and, um, it's just really good that we're caught up and doing good now. Uh, if you go to the first slide, this just describes our audit opinion, which is pretty much what you guys pay us to give you. And that's just an opinion on if your, um, financial statements are free of material misstatements. And, um, you did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance, so that's essentially a clean opinion. So that means in all material respects, your financial statements are fairly stated and we did not find anything that we needed to report. On the next slide, just kind of highlights the breakdown in your general fund revenues, which obviously that's the biggest, um, fund of the township and represents all of your major operations. So just a couple of highlights, um, federal grants is about ten percent this year, which was a decrease, um, you spent all the ARPA money last year, so that was a significant decrease of about sixty-five thousand. Um, taxes did go up, not a ton, but slightly, which is a trend we've been seeing with taxable values increasing. Um, and then there weren't any major changes in your state grants, which are mostly that state shared revenue, and then some licenses and permits decreased a little bit, um, as there were some bigger permits related to the trailer parking prior year. You turn the page, this highlights your expenditure breakdown for the general fund. So really, everything was pretty consistent, other than your general government, um, you had a big decrease in those general government expenditures, which was mainly due to less audit fees, like I said, were caught up now, so in the prior years, we were doing multiple years, um, and that was kind of driving those expenditures up. And then there was also a lot less, um, building and ground expenses, which just varies, you know, year to year based on maintenance needs or the weather. Uh, the next page just kind of shows that comparison between your revenues and expenditures, so you'll see revenues are pretty, um, significantly ahead of expenditures, which is good. That means you're adding to your fund balance, which can be used in future years for, um, any repairs and maintenance or any kind of emergency things that come up. You can see that's been kind of increasing over the last five years, which is good too. The next slide, um, this shows your fund balance, so this is, like I said, um, the amount that you guys really have in that general fund for future operations, so you can see it's been climbing and all the COVID funding that you've gotten and applying for additional grants definitely helps. So, um, I really think if anything came up or you guys wanted to put money towards projects, you have a very healthy fund balance to do so. Uh, the next slide talks about your water and sewer operations, so when we're talking about these kind of funds, you really wanna see revenues and expenses be almost, uh, even, and you'll see the last three years that has been the trend. So basically, all those operating revenues that you're getting in are supporting your, um, operating expenses, so very on track for what we wanna see for that type of fund. And finally, the last slide I have talks about the governance letter, so that's also included in your packet, so that's our letter to the board and management, kind of summarizes anything that we would have found during the audit, issues, anything like that. Um, happy to report this year it is completely clean, I don't even think there's a management comment in there, so that's really good, and really, we can thank the township, uh, you know, clerk, the treasurer's office, um, and Woodhill Group, who is doing the contracted accounting, you guys did an awesome job to get everything back on track, so to have no findings or anything is really great. Um, so there were no deficiencies, no material weaknesses, and now your audits are all up to date, so that's, that's really good, that's where we wanna be. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions for the auditor or for audit? About our audit? You got off easy, isn't it?
I guess so, if anybody ever does have any questions, I know that, uh, Chris and, uh, Rachel have all of our contact info, so we're happy to take a call anytime if, um, you have questions.
Do we need to accept, uh, the audit? Do we need a motion to accept the audit? Or we just?
It's up to you, it's not like it has to be.
People do it either way.
I think we better go ahead and do it, let's do it till it'll be, it'll show the records.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
It, uh, so, that motion would just be to accept the audit that was presented.
That's hard.
Any other discussion, all in favor? Alright, I'm opposed, thank you.
Alright, thank you, guys, have a good night.
Okay, now we also have, uh, the Patrick Blasey, is he here? From the, he's gonna explain the sewer presentation, uh, that we, we will, you know, have to vote on it at some point.
Uh, Patrick couldn't make it to me, make it tonight, uh, my name is Kevin DiPatti, I'm the sewer superintendent, I work for Patrick, I oversee the whole sewer collection system for Genesee County. Um, this presentation is our C-MON contract, which is capacity manage, management, operations and maintenance, that's what C-MON stands for. We're currently under contract for you guys through the end of this year. Our last contract started in twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-four, and we have a one-year extension through the end of this year. The rates since two thousand and fourteen have stayed, have stayed constant, we did, we, we had a bunch of analysis of data from the last year and a half that we collected and took that long to put everything together. Um, the rates are gonna go up slightly, um, but I don't have the exact numbers for the township, but I believe you may have, um, I believe, um, you may have something in your packet with that spreadsheet on it.
Yeah, we have a pretty extensive packet in your packets, that that information, so the board has it, so you can give us all the information that you have, I'm not gonna hold it to the average.
So you have approximately, approximately fifty-three thousand one year feet of sanitary sewer that we operate and maintain for you. That includes jetting, televising, um, repairs if they need to be lying, or if there's breaks and we have to dig them up and fix them, that all is covered under the C-MON contract. The rates are currently four dollars per foot and it's going up to six dollars per foot. Um, so that's over the, basically, the next, the last ten years, next twenty years, it's less than a two percent increase. Um, the rates right now are proposed to stay constant for these next ten years. We are gonna do a five-year look ahead, after five years, look back and make sure we're not, we're charging adequately, or maybe if this six dollars is not too much, we'll cut them back depending on, depending on what the, what the analysis comes out to. Um, you still have, you currently have two pump stations also that we maintain for you. Um, one is in fairly good, one's in really good shape, we just redid that station probably four or five years ago for you guys, put new pumps and control and panels and everything in for it. Um, the other station, that's a Lewis station, a railroad station, um, that is, that is needed in a few years, but the C-MON contract covers all that in cost for you. With the exception, if the whole station is, I believe it's a can station, which is a metal tube where all the pumps are underground. If that structure goes bad, that cost is not included in the C-MON contract. But replacing pumps, replacing control panels, valves, that all will be covered under this current C-MON contract.
And if you had to replace that can, that would be something you would do, we would just have to pay for.
Yes, yes, well, that, what we do is we notify you that, hey, that the structure has, is beyond its useful life. This, it needs to be repaired, we'll give it to you, we'll give you a estimated cost to, to, to do that, so that you can prepare for it. In the packet, there is some estimated cost, um, we had a police and band and break, uh, uh, engineering firm, look at all ninety-five stations that we maintain. And that report is in your handout also, um, and as part of that, they have capital improvement costs, so that you can look ahead and plan accordingly for them.
Good.
Um, most of the, like it says, most of them costs, stuff that's covered under C-MON contract and not the actual can station. So, um, we'll have to give it, once we get the notice, if the can station is going bad, we'll give you ample notice so that you can, obviously, it's gonna be replacing a location, it's gonna be three hundred thousand dollars to do that, so you need to know in advance so you can plan accordingly.
Often, how often do those, does that happen to people, that those?
Can stations?
Yeah.
It depends, it, it varies, depending on the soil conditions and when they were put in. Um, we've had some, most of these can stations are forty, fifty years old and they're still structurally, structurally good. We have a few in some other communities that the sides are good, but the floors is, is getting, is, is getting really bad, that needs to be, need to be repaired. Them, some of them like that, we can potentially do a, get an engineering firm and do a, a repair without having to do a full replacement, so that's stuff we'll look into when, when, when we get down that road. We did do this year a change in the pump station costs. Previously, it was three ninety-five for every station regardless of size. Um, and for the smaller communities like yourself, small stations, some stations like my more township have a hundred horsepower stations, doesn't make sense that they're paying the same price you are for your little five horsepower cars. So we, we did a breakdown based on submersible stations and can stations, can stations are a little more maintained because of confined space and you get the additional equipment to get down into the can to maintain the pumps. So, the submersible stations, I believe both your stations are can stations, and I believe, I can't remember if, I don't have it on me, if they're, if they're both small or large, but small can stations are six, going on up to six twenty-five a month for, um, for the maintenance, and the larger can stations are eight twenty-five a month.
Well, I just, let me stop you just for a second, I just wanna emphasize it, and I was glad you brought that up, because in the past, we got billed the same as everybody, pump station, this is it. Where this change is new, right?
This, this. This is a new tiered, tiered, tiered system, so that.
Correct. In our case, you know, with our stations being small and, and probably, like you said, one-five worth, it's definitely an advance, so I'm glad they did that overall, I'm just making, uh, you know, across the board.
We're trying to make it fair for everyone who brought us to work.
Correct.
Um, that's all I have presently right now. Um, if you guys have any questions for me, I'll stick around till, till, till it's on your agenda, till you.
We're gonna get to it.
Any questions for me?
If we're in advance before a failure, would you be able to?
At least, minimum a year to two years easily, we should be able to, because we'll let you know and it'll, it, it's easily, we could easily give you two years advance notice, no problem. Um, I'll have to look and see, I think that one right there, it doesn't say the can station in the report that police and band and break did, it just says high performance painting, which basically is painting is sealed, so it means the can is still in a good shape. So that, and that's what the report states. The Lewis one stays good, all those, and, and then there is no immediate or long-term needs for that one, because everything is fairly, fairly new. And we are going around painting yearly, going around hitting several can stations each year and try to get them all touched up and painted.
Do you have a question down there? No?
No, we spoke to him.
Okay, no worries. Okay, if there's nothing else, well, I think we're good right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, we don't have any correspondence and, uh, the supervisor has reported, I'm gonna let her do, uh, when she gets back, with the exception of one thing, um, I wanted to acknowledge, you know, publicly, the state police apprehending of the individual that was, uh, doing those, uh, breaking in rings and, uh, home invasions and that for towns, so are they one hundred percent sure it was him?
Uh, it was the whole group and they are using the hall in the mornings every month, last month, to do their meetings, and I guess they showed up in all their tactical gear last week.
Yeah.
While they're.
No, I mean, the guy they.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
He was the guy.
They're gonna give out the, the, set a date to give out the stuff out of the hall, where we'll lock it off when people come back and retrieve their stolen goods if you lost anything.
But according to the paper, which is just the paper, that was him, so. But I thought it was nice to acknowledge that the state police got involved rapidly and, uh, so. Oh, and the only other thing that was on the teacher report that is noteworthy is that the tree that fell in the cemetery, we ended up having to get the insurance and then pretty costly to clean up that tree and the headstones. In that windstorm, this tree fell over.
Insurance is covering that off of the possible damage, John.
Yeah, I think then it was, I think the bill was forty-five hundred or five thousand.
No, we're up to almost five thousand, you know, we have, we have those headstones, those great big problems.
Yeah.
The company probably come back if they can't lift them.
It was pretty, it was pretty extended.
Pay for everything.
Very nice. Actually, it's pretty cheap. Alright, there's the report, kid, if you're ready. Okay.
Sorry, a little unorganized today, we're super busy with the taxes, just a reminder, taxes are due on Monday by the end of the day for the summer taxes. And most of you will have a bay. Um, currently, right now, in the general fund, we have two million one hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty twenty-three cents. Um, Michigan class is doing extremely well. You're up to I give you this, just according to numbers, sixty-six thousand fifty dollars and sixty-three cents in interest. And then again, I would like to, um, remind the board that the P N C, we have a C D there for seven, it's got seventy-two thousand, six seventy, seventy in it. Um, it matures three twenty-one, twenty-six, so it's something for you guys to think of all, I'd like to take that money out, put it into the store. And then I haven't got anything from a bank yet. For like.
Why are you taking it out?
Because it's not drawn very much interest, I would like to take it out and put it in with the Michigan class, because we're getting four point.
Fire, I think.
Is that what it was?
I think it was, the fire, the fire authority used the same, any whole money that you don't currently use, you put in this Michigan, you can take it out anytime.
Yeah, four point three three.
This is sewer, you're talking about. Whoever gets money out of sewer, it's like loan, they gotta pay it. You can't just take the money out of sewer.
Well, it's, it's a C D, so it's an investment, so we can, we gotta wait until.
All Chris is saying is when it comes up, she's gonna ask the board, do you wanna put it in this investment or not?
Yeah.
That's, that was.
Other than that, I don't have anything.
Nothing else? Okay. Senior center, we, I don't have a report or Shannon or some chair, or you got a report, Shannon?
I can find the facts, yeah, it's on the readers.
Um, I'm particular, Leah.
Put one that one fast, it's in your paperwork somewhere. And it comes like everything.
They feel about reading. I don't think it knows necessarily, but, uh, but I can get, uh, updated count from October first to August thirty-first, six hundred and thirty-five seniors, twenty-one new in August. All sixteen senior centers have received a five percent increase in funding. Level two, level two centers, which includes Stanford, receive an increase of six thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. Let's see, they're, they're gonna have the mobile secretary of state over there on October sixteenth. I did see that flyer, you can renew your driver's licenses, Irish, uh, you can actually do plate transfers, um, and what else can you do? I didn't realize, there was, there was like five items, and they, they, the mini van will be there October sixteenth, one to three. Uh, she's mentioning the tractor show, uh, forty-eighth annual Michigan tractor show, now bus is taking seniors from there for that event. If some seniors that would like to go to that. And they're collecting items for the Christmas stocking for the troops, um, until October thirteenth. And then the final item, or second to the final item, is that immunization clinic will be October first, one P M. A vac, available vaccines include flu shingles, R S V pneumonia and COVID booster. Oh, one more item in the act, the annual trash show, Saturday, November first, in the floor.
And we use the courts report and bills for people, so.
The. You, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, no, I did, I got ahead of that.
You want me to?
Yeah, go ahead and do the court's report.
Sorry, as John told you, we had a huge tree fall last week in the cemetery, mostly people care out, except for most headstones. Um, we're still in talks with Row regarding the cemetery map. They had a little problem when they were coordinating it, we had five interments in cemetery sites. Last cross-examining and two disinterments, bringing us to a total of twenty-eight this year. And my deputy clerk and I attended the Michigan Bureau of Elections training last week in Lansing.
Oh. Was that pretty informative?
Yeah, but we're taking. We're.
I'm sorry, you have, you're all done?
Yeah.
Okay, now we can do those approval of bills from August twentieth. We time.
You can't, you got.
Yeah, you have, I'll see it motion here.
Yeah, I'll do the motion to, to the bills minus a hundred dollar. Refund, we have three refunds in dispute. Did you hear that or am I gonna repeat that?
No, I got.
Okay.
Wait, you said.
Well. We, we're doing, uh.
The bills?
Pay the bills minus a hundred dollar refund that's in dispute.
Yeah, what's, give her a chance to explain.
Yeah. But. Well, you got, I don't have support for that yet, though.
I'll give it to you, I wanna hear you explain, so.
Okay. You get it, support down there?
Uh huh.
Yeah, okay. Alright, in that case, or anything else, any other questions on the bills besides that? We're gonna have to do a roll call, yep.
Should I do then a point? I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Fill this last page.
It's the time.
What is this center to break the deposit account for, for nine hundred fifteen dollars?
Just the senior centers, they pay for their, they pay for themselves to go to, or pay, um. That's all money that's in and out, they ride the bus, they pay everything.
It's, we got our general fund?
No. It, if you look at the G L numbers, it's coming out their phone.
So they pay to go.
They pay to go, the money gets brought over here, here, to Vicki and rent now, rent check.
And then we reimburse them, you reimburse the fund.
Yeah, it comes out of their G L numbers.
Okay, that's, that's the four-two number, four-two.
No, they're two eleven, they start with two eleven.
I can't see the G L. Yeah.
There's, all their monies come out of their G L number.
Oh, so the four-two, three-seven-two is a check.
Yeah. All their G Ls come out of two eleven account and that's their money.
Okay.
Anything else that? You done?
Uh, no, that was the only one I was kind of wondering.
Okay, but nothing else, then I need a roll call. Please.
Uh, Pat.
Yeah.
Tim.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Christine, yes. Stacy, yes. John.
Yes. Okay, so I had already done the, uh. I had already done the senior report, but I gotta have my thoughts, so I'll do the fire authority report now, um, it's gonna be a combination of the August twelfth and the nineteenth meeting, which we just had a couple hours. Um, we, uh, the fire authority, we, uh, we approved a micro, removing our, we, our in-house server to the cloud, so we approved that migration process. Uh, one of the reasons we did that is that server was failing and, uh, we're gonna have to replace the server if we didn't use this program, so we did that, we did execute the two thousand twenty-six to thirty-one fire authority agreement, which all three municipalities had already approved. Uh, we upgraded their policy, um, also regarding, uh, backing up fire trucks, which is particularly relevant to station two here, this is the only station where they have to back them in. And, uh, he had some concerns, so the, uh, the, uh, the new policy requires two people watching, backing up and, and some guarantees that you're not running over anything, so. Uh, there was a motion to, uh. Uh, there was a motion to, uh, make our administrative assistant responsible for all failures at the fire authority. And, uh, we just moved forward, that was just tonight with the replacement of the air packs. We didn't wanna do that till next year, they gave out next year, but the, uh. They was a seven to ten percent increase, he was having trouble getting parts for the air packs. So we, we went ahead and, uh, bit the bullet and, uh, got that process started. They're pretty costly, uh, in the, uh, three hundred plus range. Uh, they're good for ten years. Uh, cost recovery to date for the fire authority was thirty-five thousand nine hundred and sixteen, nine dollars and twelve cents. And it was thirty-four rounds, fifteen in Vienna, nine in the third for six out of the area. And city, four in the city of Playa, for a total runs for the year of two hundred and eighty-four. So, that's, that's what we had going on in fire authority. Uh, parking wreck. If you're ready. Yeah.
Forgot the library is perfect.
Oh, I did.
We're gonna start with that because that one's shorter.
Sure, let's do that.
And. They're still don't have any stripes in the parking lot, they're gonna call chipmunk again. And then as far as the heat upstairs, they're gonna call action to come and evaluate it before they buy some new device.
Okay.
Because they need to vent that out the window. So they wanted to see if it was possible to fix it.
That's a current system up there?
Yeah. And then parks and rec, I don't know if she gave you a copy of the proposal I gave them? In park benches?
No, I think there was a, there was quite a few made a reservation in that part.
Yeah, I had put together a proposal for the parks and rec, I don't know, or parks and rec to buy a. A bench out at the golf, this, this golf course. And they approved it.
Oh.
And so they're, and then Vicky ordered it. I think I'm getting ahead of myself, but yeah, so they, they approved it and they ordered it. And they still need one more member from Stanford to sit on the committee. If.
That's for a parking wreck.
Yeah. And the z- the zombie walk, we talked about at the last meeting. There's a lot of information, I think I gave you on that too, and I got the trophies already. My victim, their meeting is next week and the library board is tomorrow.
And that, uh, what, I, I got the flyer here somewhere, but the zombie walk, when is it?
October eleventh.
October eleventh.
And I think he emailed over a flyer to put it on Facebook for us, he did this, they were cute flyers too. Yeah. Then we got one member from Kyle who's not ready for reelection, so they're gonna have to have a new member too. And Rachel had told somebody on board there, she was texting with them, she told them that she was coming to our next meeting, which is next week. And we talked about, um, the budget, and that's when we approved for us to spend the money on the park bench. Vicky ordered it, and, but it's not coming in until the end of the month. So, no need to worry about putting it in yet. And I told him that we were gonna cover this cost for installation. We get volunteers to do it, right? Is, is that right, Garrett?
Well, right, yeah. Yes and no, there's some things that will be, uh, will require eventually soon, you know. Uh, additional skill.
Well, they told me not to spend more than a thousand dollars, and we didn't spend that much on a park bench in the signage, so.
We still have, if you gotta add, if that was your suggestion or something, uh.
Yeah, well, and depending on, you know, I mean, if we go out there and try to. Dig with a postal and we just run into all kinds of roots and rocks and it's, you know, fair to say that we're either gonna. The machine out there do it.
Add some dynamite.
Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come up with something.
And then the last thing was I got a call from Jason McConnell. He had some Easter eggs to give me, so I went and loaded up my car with Easter eggs and gave them to Sue Hilgris for the Easter egg, Connor.
Nice.
Was very nice of him to thank me. Any questions, I need to thank?
And similar question, the park bench. Why don't you guys grab a picnic table from the park? That, that's the only bench that's gonna be out there. Why don't you grab a picnic table, they got probably fifty, sixty stacked up over there.
I won't.
Well, I do, I live right there.
Well, we wanted to have it out on the disc golf course.
And my question for that, you want on a disc for what?
For people to sit and look at the thing.
Let me know who goes there, I already seen three people there, you know, and you had a chance, all you people did.
To open up, it's, it's hard, it's kind of hard, but you can, you can, you'll have work, yeah.
But anyway, all I'm saying is, you know, Nicole wanted.
The other thing, and that was how it evolved, you'll get, you'll get a chance, Kevin. Thank you, Jess. You'll have work comments in a minute, you can. All right, so we're up to the planning commission, Kevin.
Okay, first off, I see we'll start with the updating on the zoning ordinance project. Uh, Wade Trim has been on the, uh, zoning ordinance number seventy-eight. And they'll audit each article and flag concerns to suggest changes. And the timeline is to start now or, or within the next few weeks to January first. Uh, they'll have it completed. This is just Wade Trim working by themselves, going through our, uh, number seventy-eight ordinance. Then after the first of the year, they plan on having, uh, weekly virtual meetings with the subcommittee. That the board had requested, uh, for discussions and to go through and, and, uh. Look at it and suggest changes or wording that needs to be done. Then they'll report back to us, uh, to the committee, what their progress is. But we won't start the, the hard work for us at this end, won't start till after the first of the year. So, and I wanna caution the, the clerk, that she probably will get some bills, uh, from Wade Trim. For this project, because they're gonna be working on it, uh, within the next few weeks to start, so it'll be Caitlin that's doing it, so it's same, same person to work with. Uh, master plan, Thursday night, we're having the public hearing at the planning meeting for the master plan. And we only received two comments during the sixty-three day period that was open for comments, it ended. Uh, September second, ran from July first to September second. And we've addressed those, uh, at the last planning meeting. Because we had those early, we've received no other ones. We will take comments at the public hearing Thursday night. And that will be followed by, uh, we'll discuss the comments. Decide if, uh, they need to be added to the master plan or something taken out, however it's gotta be done. And that'll be followed by a hold on a resolution by the planning commission to accept the twenty-twenty-five master plan. And then we'll be done with that project, there'll be some follow-up work that, uh, Wade Trim will have to do as far as inserting dates and adding any last minute changes. Then they will submit a, a, a booklet to us, a sample, then we have to, we're responsible for getting it printed. And we'll bring back some, I've got one estimate for printing right now, uh. Clerk's office had talked about printing it in-house, we'll see what's feasible, uh, I don't roll the charges for our Xerox machine. Paper, uh, toner, and also the use of the machine.
Getting the machine from another municipality, yeah.
Yeah. We'll work that out after, after Caitlin's done her thing and, and got it all ready to go.
Kevin, just one quick question right in there, do the, did, uh, did we get a certain amount of, uh, hard copies with our contract with that, with her?
No, it does, the contract did not include any kind of printing, we're responsible for printing.
Thank you.
So. Uh, the third thing is just a, a side comment regarding Midnight Brands at our last, uh, planning meeting. We did the site plan review special, uh, land use for them. There were some issues that were brought up ahead of time, uh, prior to our meeting. And we resolved them, they got resolved after I went out and contacted the neighboring property owner. He had some questions and concerns that he'd come in about. And we talked that over with him and with the management people that are gonna be, uh, operating Midnight Brands, and those have all been resolved. So there's no outstanding issues as far as the planning. So, any questions?
Anything for Kevin? Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Hey, we're gonna go old business, now we're up to that generator issue we have in your package. It's, you have the evidence from, uh, Davidson. Uh, for the senior center, um, they told me that it was not repairable. What they're telling me, and the, uh, Davidson put in, this is an eighteen K generator, they have it. With a one-year maintenance, a two-year main, or a three-year maintenance, a five-year maintenance, and a ten-year maintenance. And each have accordingly prices. You gotta look those over, and then the, uh, the other bid is this Anthem electric. Now, this is the twenty-two K. So this is, uh, twenty-two, and that's an eighteen, it's a bigger generator. Um, it's. He's not, he's not putting any additional maintenance in it, uh, but it's. Quite a bit less than that, so, well, I can say what it is. The Anthem, the twenty-two K is, uh. Their, uh, total price is twenty, or. They were, you gotta put them together, so. It's, uh, the total, and I tried to get, there you go. Yeah, you gotta add those two together to thirteen nine fifty-two and the. Oh, no, that's, that is, it is, that is the total, thirteen nine fifty-two. So the Davidson heating ones were, I'll just go through them. The one year was. Where are we? Two, one, three, five and ten. Three, five and ten, I guess. Oh, all right, and seven, okay. So the one year was. This is a generator, eighteen K, eighteen five fifty-four. Twenty-one. That's the one year, with only a one-year service, the three-year service is upset to. Nineteen thousand seven hundred and sixteen. The five-year, same generator, this is just all conclusive media, annual, and anything that fails. Twenty thousand five oh two, oh two. Seven year is. Seven year, twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents. And their last. Option is a ten-year for twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven cents. So, there, there you have, from the lowest of, uh. Eighteen something, eighteen, but least expensive to eighteen five fifty-four. To the ten-year of twenty. Twenty-two eight fifty, or the twenty-two K for thirteen nine fifty-two. But they're, they're not offering any, just the one-year. Generator standpoint.
Worthless runt, to get service for one year, wow. Your dollars, you say anyone they have money?
I think it's near under. It, it's under five hundred, I hear, you know, three hundred something, they do the oil change, two note guy, they're gonna do all that. And even this contractor, this, you know, I would probably ask him what his annual maintenance would be. If we chose him, but. I guess, I guess, that's your options. We, I didn't pick that, I think, I do have one more.
Who's that? You just mentioned.
This is, let me see where he's out of, Anthem Electric, this is an electrical contractor out of Davis. And I did have one more, um, but this one. And this is from Holland Heating, a, a, a company in, in Flint. My problem is, he's eighteen six sixty-one, plus a permit. But he doesn't tell me, he, they don't want the make, no. From your package, so. I, I, I couldn't hardly do any justice in a, in a bid like that, so.
But they, they have a line, they want the special meeting, Kevin's gonna give us a warranty on this first one, see when it comes through.
It's up to you, I, I don't care, we can do it, we're, we're not under, I mean, the, the other one isn't working, but we're not under any direct, or us here to do it, if he'd rather table it. So you could see what his maintenance, this guy, the electric contractor would be. Looks like home company survey that, that tops us five years, parts five years later.
This one is that?
Well, he does at a time.
He's actually the cheapest one.
Yes.
Eleven three thirty-five.
See, kinda threw me, because he looked like he bid a furnace on the inside, you see, well, he's got all these, it's furnace part, yeah. He didn't understand why, but you're correct, it's five years. Warranty of parts and labor five years, so from a value standpoint, he does pretty good value, two six three one. Uh, and if you look at break time, he's got three percent senior discounts. Ten percent. Sale. And then, not stop five grand for an existing, for the existing generator, so.
Is that for these here, that they said they were getting?
No, I think that's to replace the one that's in there.
Exactly.
But like, since he does not give us.
No, I don't. Yeah, so I'd be, I'd be, if that, if this was in the same range as the other one, I'd be riding with them. So, if you wanna table it, but I don't know what size it is, he doesn't.
Mean to reach out back to these two and ask them?
Yes.
But.
If you, if, if the board would like to table it, then I would ask you to find out how much annual maintenance is from the medical contractor. And find out what size this thing is.
Oh, yeah, I don't like that, so.
Every one of this. I'm sorry, here's the other two.
I'll make a motion and we table the generator, uh, till we can get further information.
Okay, and then you're gonna take care of that for us, any information for me? All right, all in favor of tableing that?
Hey, I, I, I'll host.
All right. So now we're gonna go to new business, thank you. Uh, this is the lateral sewer system and maintenance agreement. So, we're, we're up to the sewer maintenance agreement, it's a ten-year agreement, um. You know, I'd like to see us, um. Adopt that, because we're not in a position, um, to maintain that sewer system that we have, even though it's small over there. And I think it's fair that they've, uh, made some adjustments for our smaller substation, or our smaller pump stations.
You wanna make a motion on that, Jack?
I'll make that motion, and we, uh, adopt the lateral sewer agreement second, and I don't know if that's a problem, I mean, maybe. Pat seconded, I think that's correct. Yeah, it's a lateral sewer system operation and maintenance agreement, so that's how, the way it needs to be. Uh, and let's do a roll call of that, if no one has any other questions, so we can.
Now, I, I do have one question. Um, is this the one where? We can't help it, but we have to increase the, uh, payments or something.
Still be, yes.
Two percent.
That's the one, okay.
Then we, we just passed it along, we don't add any fee or nothing, but we just.
Right, it just goes straight to the sewer people, right?
Yeah, we just have to give it, if the sewer increases, we increase it to those residents that have the sewer over there.
And how long is this one good for?
Ten years.
Ten years?
Yeah. And that's actually, I'd like that, because the agreement's locked into that rate, because you know inflation is. That's, that's it, so.
Right. Yeah, I understand what it was.
The total, uh, I don't know that right up in what the total is, it's in this. No.
Drudge, and next to the bill, what do we pay for three months' bills? Uh, one man achieved where it says, so.
Yeah, well, I can tell you what it is, it's, it's six dollars a foot. I think that's what happened.
Yes.
I'll remember the.
Four to six?
It went from four to six, yeah. So. I, I just, I don't exactly how many feet we have, inflation. Yes. Okay, if there's nothing else, roll call, please.
Uh, Pat.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Christine, yes, Vicky, yes. John?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric, Mitch?
Yes.
You answered, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And now we're going to go to the renewal, and before I go to the renewal of, uh. The, uh, Midnight Brand bought donuts there, so if any of you are getting bored and wanna donut, help yourself to a donut.
No, you wouldn't mean.
I know, I'm sorry. So anyways, the renewal, the first one is renewal for HCM, uh, provisioning center. And Elite Wellness, four ninety-four twenty-three North Door. Highway Montmore's, Tammy's here, if he, she wants to, if you wanna ask any questions, or if you have any concerns with that one, or you can come up, or whichever you'd like to. If we, and since we have three in a row, you might as well, if you wanna come up, yeah.
Thank you.
It says that the renewal for, uh.
Um.
Ninety-four twenty-three.
We have to put the mic down, Tammy can't hear you.
Yeah, that's for, uh. Yeah, that's for uh Elite. Uh it's a retail over on Door Highway.
Provisioning is the retail.
Correct. Yeah, well, everything's paid up.
Everything's all all good on there, yes. Okay, and then we have um, let's do them for separate.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Yeah, forgot.
Okay, but let's uh if someone likes to make a motion on that, we can do get that one done.
I'm making a motion, we accept. The renewal for HCM provisioning.
Any other discussion?
I have a question for Tammy.
But let me finish this vote unless it's related to those.
It is related to the.
All of you say hi, I like both, okay. Now, we're gonna go to the next renewal. If you, is your question related to the next one?
No, it's related to the ones, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
And what I don't know is he he says all paid up. But did he have a lot of problems with licensing and stuff like that?
Not at least.
Not at least, there I noticed one of them's got a lot of problems.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's go with uh see renewal, uh Doored Highway ninety two twenty two North Door. That's a go or classy recreational.
Yes, that's a uh. An adult um. An adult recreation.
Yep. And they're all cleared away as well?
They are all paid up to date, everything um. They did get a fine. Of something and he was supposed to bring me in the paperwork, but I I think he forgot. And I forgot to ask him when he brought in his application, but he is here so you guys can ask.
How you doing?
No, I I let me hear what he has to say and then we'll. Yes, go ahead. See, we're just, it sounds like you're all good. So you had a violation or something, you got squared away?
Yeah, we're um a recreational growth facility. And we recently uh upgraded one of the buildings on the property. To put our uh smaller plants and stuff into the building. And we had got approval from you guys for the building, passed all of our inspections, and then we got C R A approval also passed our video paper inspections. And then we kept going back and forth with the B F S inspection. And one of our employees was confused with uh email that we received from our attorney saying everything was fine. And he moved some plants into the house and then uh. B F S inspector showed up to do his inspection and the plants were in the house and we got a fine for that. So we paid the fine and uh we're all compliant and that was the only issues we had uh just the one time.
What what was the cost of that?
Uh twenty five thousand. Yeah.
They wanted to make sure you knew what it sounds like, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. We had a a storage container on the property too that wasn't on our site plan. So that was part of that same incident. They wrote a fine for that. And then uh when they did, they found the plants in the house, there were some clones in there too that didn't have the proper uh tags on them either. Um but it was all, that was one incident and only incident we've ever had. So, yeah, we paid that. We just recently had a new inspection and everything went fine.
They weren't good.
Yes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And I'm looking for a motion to renew that renewal.
I'm making a motion to renew.
I'll support it. Any other discussion on that renewal? Everybody in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Who's?
Yeah, okay. Now, we're gonna go to the final, the new processor, uh ninety four twenty one North Door. Highway Mount Morris, Midnight Brand, representative here from there as well.
Yeah.
Hi, everybody. Uh yeah, we're still with Midnight Brands, uh also with HCM Provisioning, the Provisioning Center next door uh. We've operating this township for geez, with the Provisioning Center and with Rule nineteen, I mean for going on twelve, thirteen years now. Um we haven't had any issues. Uh the previous tenant of that building, Sky Labs, obviously had some issues, so. They uh they're no longer licensed, they are out of business, uh moved out, uh they are moving the space into uh a new processor. Which is why we're trying to do the new permit. Not intending to have any issues, uh have new management there, obviously, same license as I told the planning board when that came uh a month ago with them. Uh but overall, I mean, we've we've been a good uh citizen of this township, uh. You've been very supportive of the township, the township's been supportive of of us over the years, so. We put a lot of money into the buildings over there, the old source where they shop and whatnot. So we continue to do that and we wanna continue to do that, so we hope you approve this license tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I spoke with Kevin before the meeting and he and you can elaborate if you like, Kevin, if uh but you didn't have any.
No, the the issue from the resident, he thought when he seen the uh public hearing announcement, he thought they were putting up another new building. Which would affect the runoff water onto his property. After I talked to him and assured him and showed him the plans that no, there's no additional buildings going out there or anything. That resolved uh most of the issues that we had. The other issue was, like he alluded to, is the the past management that's no longer there. Were going to be there, so this is the fresh start for them. That was the two concerns that we had going into the meeting. And we resolved both of them through the course of the meeting. And it should be reflected in our minutes from our meeting also.
Very good, thank you. Okay, I'm I'm ready for a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion to approve the Midnight Brands L O C ninety four twenty with the Door Door Highway, Mount Morris. Second.
You got that?
Yes, yeah.
Good, all in favor, say hi. Nice, I think we got a hundred percent on that. Okay. Very good, you're all set.
Eat the donuts.
Eat the donuts, okay.
One donut never hurt anybody.
That's right. Read the public comments. Eat a donut. All right, if there's no public comments, I will go. All right, I didn't see you getting up or anything.
Sorry, I had my foot stopped. See you, Eric.
Thank you.
Sorry, I lost my.
This is part of your three minutes.
No, it's not. Okay. We would like this to be submitted in to the minutes. I, Tammy Batterby and my husband, Daniel Batterby, live at one two two five East Francis Road. There are several written complaints, also discussions with the supervisor, Rachel Stinky, and the prior. Um code enforcer, Greg Lanta. Um about issues with the flooding of our backyard. Including all of our other neighbors. Um after the building of the marijuana facility was approved. And built behind our house in twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. The situation has gotten worse after they cut down trees, added gravel and fenced an area. Um without coming back to the plan. And that was done in twenty twenty four. We tried to uh request it to be added to the agenda to address these concerns and was denied. By the clerk Stacy Wells and the supervisor, Rachel Stinky. We haven't heard of any updates to resolve this matter at the board level. So we would like this to be added into the minutes and thank you for your.
You don't have to have a copy.
Have to get a copy for you.
You can still otherwise, you can have a tough time with that all, but you probably get it off.
Apologizing, not as prepared, nothing's got to work. Um. My name is Dallas Sanford, I live at one two seven nine East Vienna Road. With the former uh ordinances and co department, I've been having a lot of issues in previous six years with my neighbors. Um so excessive noise, all hours of the night. I called up to the township, I've made reports, the previous um ordinance is gone over there several times, my understanding. And the last time I called, I was informed to contact state police, I contacted state police over the week for the continuation of issues. And they told me there's nothing they can do to enforce ordinances. Um you know, it's. The house is a known problem. Uh it seems like all the neighbors on the strip have had issues in the past. Both on both side of the house as well as further down. Um it's all hours of the night, revenue vehicles. We were in the process of moving and our realtor informed us that the address is not listed as an auto. Automotive repair facility that operates under twenty four hours a day. Um significantly affecting our property value. We've since decided not to move because I don't feel that I should add the relocated family.
What's the address again?
My address is one two seven nine East Vienna Road, file. The address in question is one two nine one East Vienna Road.
Two nine one.
East Vienna Road, yes.
That's separate.
That's separate township, yes.
Yeah, cuz I never heard of us approving.
I didn't, I I didn't think so. Um it's listed on online if you Google it, it's uh. B and D Automotive Repair, it's the name of the facility. You know, the back, you know, I, what they decided to do in their household is their own, the backyard looks like a junkyard, uh the fence is half ripped down, I had it on top of my own. To block it, but um you know, the revenue vehicles at one, two, three, four o'clock in the morning. So excessive.
And the police say they can't do anything.
Police don't do anything. You, they're gonna do anything at all.
If you talk to the supervisor about this yet.
No, but uh I have been in contact with the neighbor who was on the other side. And uh he's informing that he's had several conversations with the supervisor and they have lots of nowhere.
Can you? And I and I don't wanna, can you, can you write that kind of up in a statement? And bring it to the township? Where the process currently are getting a new code enforcer. But uh I would feel better if you wrote it up, addressed it to the supervisor and if you can address it to me as well, if you like. Uh and we'll both get a copy and then we can see what we.
Address a lot of these issues.
Please address it to the full board.
Yes, that that would be.
Actually, isn't there a complaint form in there or something?
I just like to have, you know, his 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 take and his odd writing is, it's it looks so much easier to deal with for a complaint.
And like I said, I've spoken to other neighbors and the ones that are knocked and joining houses can hear it all hours of the night.
Uh is that commercial property?
No.
No, it's.
So they are listed as a repair facility on the web. I did look them up.
All residents are right there.
It should not have any.
Yeah, we can, we should be able to address that. I mean, don't get me wrong, we can't address it like today, but we can address that.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be great. I'm just trying to get to the end of it. You know, I I'm to the point where I have to have. A contractor come out and possibly spend tens of thousands of dollars aside to soundproof the side of my home. Because of ways, not only me, my wife, my daughter of the night.
Generally, you can't run a commercial business.
I don't think so.
We have, there's some home occupations that have slipped through the cracks and there's some home occup, started as home occupations that are now businesses. But an auto repair facility is not a home occupation. So that would be a little more challenging to convince me, so. If you write up the report, ring it in, address it to the board and um. And like I said, we're we're close to getting a code enforcer or a new one and we can start the process again and so. But definitely from a standpoint of zoning, I think there's a problem there, so.
Okay, um when I address it, can I just mail to the township? I have unpredictable work orders.
Is it through Dropbox?
Yes, put it in Dropbox if you'd like. Any other? Eat a donut.
Uh Eugene Moncel, and I just would like to say again that I did put my application in for code enforcer. I did have an interview with Rachel. Uh as far as last I knew, she had another interview she was supposed to do. And they were having a problem with conflict of uh times or whatever. But uh I was just wondering if the board knew when uh you guys were gonna be making a decision on the. Code enforcer, I kinda thought it was gonna be tonight, but.
Go ahead and address it.
She said that she was gonna call a special meeting within the next week or so.
Pardon me?
Can you speak that?
She said she was gonna uh set up a special meeting with her next week or so.
Fifty one to the rush, let's get to fifty interviews.
I mean, this has been going on since, what, last month or the month before when you guys put it in the paper, so it should be resolved. I mean, if it ain't me, it should be somebody because more people like that gentlemen are dealing with stuff that nobody's taking care of, so.
And you will get.
Ask them, but.
There, I I understand um when I spoke with her today, she has a another person coming in for an interview. I think it's even taller. So she um.
Well, like I said.
He's referring to a special meeting and so you can look at the applicants and pick out of the.
Now we get to look at them?
Well.
She's not a board of one, it's a board of seven.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna pick who it is.
Yeah, she's gonna do a recommendation. And then you guys make your decisions. Her making the decision, it's you guys. She just did an interview with me and then, well, the way she explained it to me is when. She has like either me or the or the other applicant or both of us. You guys will be able to ask us questions while we're standing up here and then we would answer them to you, just like our other interviews with the board. But she was doing uh the interviews first and then then gonna bring us to to you guys.
That would be any more than that.
But there was only two of us that put in applications, so.
About that, Eugene, I care about the fact that now she's doing interviews on her own and expects us, oh, well, you guys can talk to her a minute or two and then we're gonna make a decision.
Well, it'll be an interview, it wouldn't be a minute or two, it would be however long you guys took to ask the questions and. Then I would answer the questions that Tim would ask and you would ask, but.
I'm not stupid, thank you, but what I'm getting at. Is two people have now put in, this is the first I'm hearing of this, we're a board of seven, not a board of one. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Understanding and I am not confident attitude with you, Pat. I don't expect you to copy.
You this fucking man's playing me either. That is, here's your comments.
I've got a some. Question for him too.
All right, any other public comments?
Yeah.
Just a minute. Just get the last public comment so Benny can do your organ.
Okay, a couple things. When we're talking about the, you were just talking about interviews, things like that. As I recall, did you guys get a chance to interview the other maintenance people? There were two of them?
No.
Okay.
Yes, there you go.
Well, you might have, you're in the office. So is it basic, but you're board of seven, not one or two or three? Secondly. Some of you may believe that that is a petty thing to say about. Not following procedures, but when somebody fills out that contract, it's a contract, a rental agreement is a contract. That's a contract with the township. It's not a petty thing. If we allow everybody to do it, one person to do it, then everybody should be allowed to do it. Number three. Um I'd like to look back uh to July twenty first, twenty twenty, please. And just because there's a motion in there that states the packet will be ready. By five o'clock Thursday before the meeting. Now, if we're gonna keep motions that have been made in the past, that's a motion that needs to be. upheld as well because it was made in the past in the best interest of the residents so that you all have a chance. To investigate all that that packet you received that you're looking at. It must be an inch thick. If you all have a chance to read it. As Chris said, I talked to her today. She didn't have hardly any time to look at it because.
No, I said I didn't have time to look at the bills, but I had already looked at the bills when I signed them.
Well, you may have signed the bills, but that's a packet. You had several. You have something to say? You had several quotes in there for generator. There's not enough time for you to go and investigate all of those if you just received your packet with those quotes in it. So whether you believe it's petty or not. Those are the things that you need to look at and I know for sure John and Farid were on the board. July twenty first, twenty twenty, we voted on there. So was uh Supervisor Stinky. So you all voted on that so that you would have time to do your research. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, let's do our, now we're gonna do board comments, Tim, if you want to start.
Yes, I got a a question for Eugene.
It's a comment, it's not a question. Alright, you can make your statement, but that, he does not.
What time are you gonna take over this? Code enforcer job, you're gonna be here all day, or are you gonna be here in the afternoon?
That's that's for the interview, Tim, I mean, if you got a thing, you do what you want.
I'm gonna go by what the man told me.
If you want, if you can say, you can say what you want, if you want him to be here.
Here you go, I'm gonna spill it, put it right out.
Say what you want.
The saying is, there's a book, the red book, and that red book says you must have military background. You must have some type of police background, if you don't have it, you're not entitled.
Hey, you wanna go, you want me to go the other way? Alright, so I'm not trying to be a man of chicken with anybody, Eugene. Um I'm frustrated with the fact that procedures are not followed with this particular person. Um. The minute she got those applications, she should have informed the other six members of the board, hey, we got applications, this is who it is. This is the first I'm hearing of this. She's already talked to you guys.
I I just, I know, the meeting you weren't here, it was.
It's not, it's not a question and answer, just tell them what you. It doesn't, it shouldn't have to be in the meeting, this is twenty twenty-five, everybody's got an email. She knows how to email me, she always emails me when she wants to bitch at me about something. Um. But like I said, this is the first I'm hearing of this, and it's got nothing to do with you. But I love to sit down and talk with you guys, I love to sit down and talk to anybody, but it was like, the maintenance guys. She decided, hey, this is who we're gonna hire, and nobody got to talk to them, I didn't get to talk to them. Tim didn't get to talk to them, I don't know about the rest of them, they they might have, they might not have, I don't know. But it's a, i- i- it's a constant failure to follow procedures. And a hundred dollars for the hall rental may seem petty. But it boils down to following procedures. There are supposed to be procedures in place. So that there's seven people up here that know what's going on, not just the one. The one does not run this, she is one of seven trustees, she just happens to have a few extra duties. Just like the clerk and the treasurer, all seven of us are trustees, those three people just have extra statutory duties to do. So it's not, I I'm just getting frustrated with every time we turn around, it's something new with this one. She's got something going on that none of us know about until a meeting, or she's gotta call a special meeting to do it. Why didn't she call a special meeting so that we could discuss getting somebody to come cut that tree up? Because let me tell you what, looking out there, they could have taken down about two or three more trees that we could have all agreed to just go and have that done then. But she doesn't do that. So this is not, nothing against you or anybody else else that has applied, um. It's just a failure on her part continuously to follow procedures. You know, Janice, if you came in and you put your hundred dollars down and you wanted the rental, you did it the right way. If anybody else walked in and says, hey, I want it on that date, nope, Janice put the money down, Janice followed the contract, Janice gets it that day. That is, that's the procedure, but to come in and say, well, I'm doing it on this day, and then after the fact, when you get caught. Oh, I better do it the right way, that's not the procedure and that's not fair to any of us. We're not just seven board members, we're also seven residents. So none of us have precedent over anybody else or um. I can't even think of the word, um none of us should have the ability to do what we want. Instead of being on your people's terms with the residents. Whatever we get to do, you all should get to do. And whatever you get to do, we should get to do, you know, it's it's fair that way. Not, hey, I'm the supervisor, I'm gonna do what I want and screw all you all, it's not how this is supposed to go. Thanks for coming, have a good night. Okay, alright, Stacy, do you have anything you want on?
I would like to thank everyone for their patience, while cemetery was getting cleaned up, that was a terrible storm. And we got it done, but then the insurance limits, we're still working on those headstones. Um and I would like to thank y'all for coming out.
Eric. Uh yes, I'd like to uh uh thank the uh state police, uh also for the uh. The rest of the individual stealing, you know, people's property, I thought they did a very good job uh investigating the case. Apparently they used, played some interesting tactics. Uh and also, I would like to um thank our uh. Secretary of Maintenance Ben and so forth, that worked in cemetery after the uh tree broke, uh it was a very large tree. Uh the stump itself was like over four foot diameter. Uh the uh the stump was uh. Round off very well, and uh I thought they did a very good job of of maintenance, so uh thank you to them and uh thank y'all for coming out, thank you.
Alright, Chris.
I just wanna say that I agree with Julie, I think rules should be followed, that's why I did the voting, yes. Not to pay the hundred dollars. Um as far as the code enforcement, I hope that we can come to an agreement, hire one soon. Um I agree with Eric, they did a really good job cleaning up the cemetery. Um and that's, thank y'all for coming out and having a good night.
That's it, well, thank you all for coming, we got two that. Somebody eat some donuts. Eating adjourned.
I swiped it, which. No sympathy.
No, are we cool? You like it? We have really just two companies, well, we got the door, we can't tell what it is, so.
And go around being big stores on a lot of my.
That because these are eighteen K and twenty-two K. It's from Davidson, eating.
And so. We all know that was a spot, you get a top dollar.
He doesn't, see, it's eighteen. You're so. Or, I think they have a lot of problems with their generators. Generator puts off putting. Could be undersigned, so for less money and more. Sure, thanks, well. He'd be like, hey, why is your warning? And then every time that I. Yeah. Give me that guy.
I flipped it.
She was just telling me he's on the.
Like on auto.
Yeah, I know.
He was in the back for me.
Then he takes a shower, puts his clothes back, waves himself again, goes.
The mudsucker ate all my garden.
Yeah, I wonder. I hear about it every time.
She did, I mean.
That's, that's.